...of the board of trustees for Indian Park. Today's date is June 27, 7:30 PM. The board please call into office.
Mayor Andrews.
President.
Trustee Schnopper.
Here.
Trustee Walsh.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Hinshaw, not president. Trustee O'Laughlin.
Here.
Trustee Wittenberg.
Here.
And for Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice First item, mayor report, I have three brief items. First one being the electrical aggregation program. For the people who were eligible for the program and covered, and which is basically the design for residential and small commercial in the village, if you're not under the alternative energy supplier contract, or you had opted out of, excuse me, if you were under contract with an alternative energy supplier, or you had opted out of the village program, then this doesn't apply to you. But for everybody else who are automatically covered, you should have seen the rate reduction on the most recent bill for some time period starting in early May, around the 7th or 9th. There's different areas of the village, I think they call them bands, depends on when the year gets read, and then they develop the bill and send it out. I know my most recent bill reflected the rate reduction. So anyway, that's out there. The next thing that I had, I'll cover it up, is there, I posted it online, here it is. The Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago issued a press release earlier in the month, however, this just arrived, I think it was Tuesday. It's federal flood relief application deadline is July 9. It applies to residents and businesses who sustained flooding damage between April 6 and May 5 of 2013. You have until July 9, 2013, to apply for federal funding assistance. On our website is a link to the press release, and it talks about the application process. I don't have the details of what it would take, or how you prove it. They have information that they would request, but if you sustained water damage during that time period, you haven't filed, you have a chance, if you hadn't known that, to look at our website and look into it. It may apply to you, and you may be able to get some assistance from that. Lastly, and keeping in time with the upcoming Independence Holiday, our state representative, Jim Durkin, from the Illinois Congressional 82nd District, is having a free American flag exchange program. This arrived yesterday, yeah, it was yesterday, Wednesday. And what it is, is if you have a U.S. flag that's worn, tattered, needs to be replaced to the extent that it has supplied last, you can go to his local office in Western Springs on 55th Street and exchange your old flag for a free new one. And on our website, on the village desk page, is a, actually I copied the email he sent, so the information is all right there. So if you're interested, take advantage of that. Those are the three items that I have. First item, and only item of business for tonight's meeting, is the continuation of the discussion of the budget for fiscal year 2013 to 2014. We had discussed that some length last time. We had an executive session that we're discussing employee pay raises, and we have arrived at that figure for this year, and it's included in the budget, and it's a 2% raise. And we had talked about Public Works, trustee Bailey had brought up, and police from trustee Walsh. Trustees were given until last Friday to submit other additional information or suggestions with respect to the budget, and that was distributed to the board. Some of the suggestions that we had discussed last time, and coming from the input from the trustees, have been incorporated into a revised budget. And the revised budget now has a surplus of $13,189, so in the black. This last, first budget, on paper showed a $90,000 deficit, but that was due to having gotten the co-chief water funds from the year before, and a net deficit of $18,000 now we're into the black. Trustees had received the input from each other earlier this week, and had a chance to look over that, and this time will continue the discussion from the trustees if they have anything to add. Okay, here in the month, then, I will at this time open it up to the audience for questions and comments about the budget. I think, just so we can, we have the, we have the net, I've read the figures last time, but let me just repeat. For the proposed budget, our total village revenues were anticipating $4,024, $4,024,806. And... $4,000? $4,082, yes. The deficit's $58,000 on paper, but if you pay out the $7,125 grant money received, it's a $13,000. $89,000. Okay. $4,024,806 revenue, $4,082,867 proposed, and that's because of that co-chief partial payment that we received in the last fiscal year. Again, to remind people, because I see some people weren't here last time, the budget is not a document we have to pass. It's not something that we're required, but the 53 years that the board's been around, and 20-something that I'm, you know, been privy to, to some extent, aware of, the board has used the budget, and defined it to be, and how I personally find it to be a useful tool. These are not caps on spending, nor are they requirements that the revenues be raised to the extent that we reflect them. But it's, actually, it's like a one-year capital plan, or financial plan for the village, how we expect to do this year. For example, at the discussion last time, we talked about police overtime, and that was reduced. $120,000 was the proposed initial amount, and it was reduced now to $110,000.
Right.
What happens if, as we're going along, and we see that we're hitting the $110,000 overtime figure, and there's something major, and I hope that doesn't come about going on, we don't tell the officers on overtime, "Sorry, we don't need you any longer, you can go home now, we reached our budget," that amount. We will continue to provide the services. So again, it's a target, it's a tool, and it's the best we can do, it's basically our best guess as to where we're going to be, and how we're going to conduct the year. If we find, like, the one year we had where salt expenses went up five times what they were anticipated, obviously you cut back someplace else, and you do the best you can. So, having said that, and we're at the point, I will entertain questions and comments from the audience regarding the budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Is this new draft online?
Yes, of course.
Is it? Okay. On that same open government tab?
Yes. Good. And the old draft is as well, I believe. Yeah, both draft, yeah, one draft, too.
Any others? Say your name and address, please.
Carol Coleman, 129 Acacia Circle. There's two drafts, so that, I've downloaded my draft, just Thursday, on Tuesday, so it doesn't say draft one, draft two. I uploaded it first thing Tuesday morning. If you want to look at page one, if the bottom of page one shows, or bottom of page one A, the expenses, shows $4,082,867, you have the current. And then I do have a couple of questions on there. A curiosity question, is it under building department expenditures for professional plan review, you have $10,000, the village anticipating tentative additional developments on there, that would, there would be a $10,000 proposed amount for them? And last year it was $5,000, doesn't show what we actually budgeted, doesn't show the exact expenditures for that, but curiosity. We did spend more than, I got the budget $5,000 amount, due to increased activity. On the other hand, on revenues, we came in above budget on revenues for building permits as well. I, Frank and I met with Kathy to try and get an idea of if she thought this whole summer, this whole fiscal year was going to be increased activity with people doing work. And I guess there are a couple, you can tear down, there might be, which would be a significant amount of time to use. Most building permit things have been squared in terms of use as well. I was hoping it was something one residential, they build out of one of the empty storefronts or something. After my announcement.
Another question, you said?
I don't think they're under alarm fees, there's a one-time alarm fee, $150. I thought at some point in time they'd get enraised. Apparently not, it just began sort of, a general question.
Something that we'll have to look into.
And I guess for the chief, now we have many false alarm calls, and what is charged for the, what's the fee charge for that, you know, off the top of your head?
You have, you're allowed three false alarms, and then I believe it's, off the top of my head, it's $100 after the third one.
That's in the year.
When you're done, I don't want to interrupt the questions with the audience, but I do have a couple of questions or comments that I wanted to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Tim Kizavant, One Stone Heart Lane. Is this, is this a bare bones budget, or are there some things included in the year that would be on the wish list, that if maybe we don't do well, we would be able to cut back and still come reasonably close to balancing the budget at the end of the year?
I think the way I would answer it, with Frank and Dave to put in, it's, it's things that we would like to do, so to that extent, it's a type of wish list. For example, we had in here about, you know, the values for the dump trucks and public works. Well, I'll give you an example, we took out maintenance on the well back here, to the tune of $35,000. That was in there initially, because we would like to do it, but we had discussion last time, and we decided that, okay, we don't really have to do it now, but it's going to have to be accomplished at some point in time. So there may be items, that was one that, you know, was the most visible, because we talked about it, and we decided to postpone it. So it's bare bones in that, to that extent that we've cut it out. But there are, there are things that trustees have raised questions about, that are more policy decisions going forward, but right now, the situation is what it is, unless and until the board discusses and changes the policy, so certain things need to be funded. Last time, we had some discussion about snow plowing and salting, and limiting it to a certain time, or cutting it off at a certain time. Personally, one thing that, well, as mayor, I want to continue to have is to provide the snow plowing and salting services that our village is accustomed to as best we can. Not to say that if we can do it cheaper than we've done it, then against that, for it, we're not going to cut back. You know, we're not going to say, gee, it's 4:35, but on Friday, the guys go, and it snows overnight, and there's 11 inches on your driveway on Saturday morning, and we say, oh, you have to wait till they come back on ready-to-time Monday. I don't know, other than that, how to answer your question.
I think, yes, there's, there would be things that, obviously, we would, we could cut back if something was going up. For example, the fact that you budget $100 or $110,000 for police overtime, in a situation or several arise that require us to spend more than that on overtime. And there's other things in the course of the year that maybe we budgeted for, but we haven't gotten to the point of doing it. There's some money in here for computers at the Public Works building and the police.
Let's say we saw something go up, and we hadn't bought the computers yet. We could potentially buy cheaper ones, or delay that purchase to another year to help offset an unforeseen increase.
It's not complete bare bones, where we just have a hard time getting to that. I mean, it's one thing to balance the budget, sometimes you balance the budget to a point where it becomes unrealistic to expect it, but it doesn't sound like that's our situation, which is good.
Well, I can only speak for how it's been done the last six years while I've been the village president, and I tend to be conservative on behalf of the village when it comes to fiscal matters, in that I would rather have a higher amount budgeted and expect it, especially on the expense side, and try to come in certainly no higher than that. And I'm talking about a reasonable figure, not pie in the sky. And come, and try to manage it, and come in under that figure. Then budget low, I mean, we certainly can do that. Budget $60,000 for police overtime, and blow right through that.
Yeah, you know it's not realistic, so there's no sense in trying.
Exactly, exactly. So I would rather, I would rather face going in deficits, because, not huge ones, because ultimately, a lot of that stuff, it will catch up with you, especially when you forego infrastructure repairs, and, remind me of another point I wanted to make, but I would rather be conservative in that regard, to expect a higher expense, and then try to come in less than that, and have either a less of a deficit at the end of the year, or maybe even end up in the black. The infrastructure thing, that point I wanted to make, trustee Hinshaw had stated in his input, the discussion, and it was, actually, it was something that I had with him, and we were talking about costs of water main breakage, and would the guys have to dig up the street, get down, fix the water break, and then they repair. And I, at the time, I believed it to be true, but I found out afterward I misspoke. We don't pay for the water repair out of the water fund, and then the street repair of the street fund, you know, the street maintenance that we have. It all comes out of the water fund, so I want to make that clear for the record. Water main breaks, whatever we have to do to fix it, is charged off against the water fund. Mr. Metz, if you had a hand up.
Yeah, since they, you said the budget isn't necessary, it's not a requirement.
By law, that's correct.
By law. How come the special meeting, since the revisions weren't ready until Tuesday morning online, why not do this in a regular board meeting, why the special?
Because the next one is in July, and we need to pass appropriations ordinance, and the practice of the village has been to base appropriations ordinance amounts on what we budget. So that's the starting point, rather than just come up with a guess of what we need to appropriate and pass that ordinance. The appropriations ordinance is one that is required by law to be passed. So that's why I wanted to get the budget to the point where it's not going to make everybody happy, but at least we have some agreement that, okay, this will be the next year plan, and we'll use that to draft the appropriations ordinance, and I agree that needs to be posted.
Or be online Monday, and available for inspection physically on Monday, at least 10 days before the meeting.
And that's the reason for the special meeting? Any others?
A question, you say we cut $10,000 out of this budget. You will still, will you still be covering every shift, every day of the year? Or do you plan, will the village be covered 365 days, 24 hours a day?
I believe, I've been working with Frank on this, and of course we will. We will continue to provide police protection. We're going to try to use part-time services more efficiently than we have in the past, and that's one of the items Frank had been working on, and I think by doing so, we should be able to make substantial cuts in overtime. Hopefully, it'll be more than 10% of the money concerned in our estimates for budget purposes.
Are you still going to work in the overtime, I believe under the, due to the contract that we, there's certain things that you have to do, you just can't hide those money. Sorry, pardon, please, officer. There's some, when I remember, some, they have a right, I feel like, better term, right of first refusal for some of the overtime that's available?
Obviously, for Frank, I...
Yes, they join the contract, they have, when the schedule's put together, there's blanks where people are working. The full-time, after the schedule's made, the full-time officers each have a chance to pick two days first. Then we follow with the part-time, because that's the contract right now. So yeah, we're committed, if the officers want to exercise their right under that contract to take two days first, that they get it first. Yes.
And Matt, Mr. Corcoran.
It's 6417 Apache Drive.
Thank you.
A question, bits and pieces that have kind of come up in the conversation. Is there a list handy of the substantial changes that have been made from the previous version to the current one?
It's a pretty short list, because not much was discussed last time. $30,000 for a police squad was moved to fiscal year 14, 15. The $10,000 reduction made to the police overtime. Ceasepar, or Special Parks and Recreation line item, I had called to get a figure when I was preparing the draft budget, and what I spoke to at that time told me there wasn't going to be any change, any increase, anything, so I left it the same as last year. Came to find out at the last meeting, it was about a $3,500 decrease due to EAV, so I...
But it's just a, I put it as a trade-off, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. And the well maintenance of $35,000 was removed. Those were four reductions made from draft one, and the updated salary increases from the executive session at the last meeting of 2% was added back then. Those were the changes made between draft one and draft two. And if you, what I just mentioned, too, is in a cover letter on that document online.
Just a comment, and forgive me, I'm going to compliment, so, you know, please forgive my pistol here, but we're really talking about fundamentally a cash basis budget. I know there is some, I think there was like $94,000 of depreciation in the Public Works budget, but mayor, you mentioned it, you know, the talk about infrastructure. The budget does not reflect what the village is consuming. And the village is consuming another year of wear and tear on the streets, and another year of wear and tear on the sewer system, and the water system, and, you know, everything down to the light poles. And without that cost being reflected in the budget, we really don't have a balanced budget. We have, we have a cash spending plan that won't deplete our cash resources, but we continue to dig a hole in terms of infrastructure. No pun intended there.
I mean, we are working with the Public Works trustees, and putting some of those together, so we can start seeing what we're at, with trustee Frank.
Right, yeah, I think the ultimate goal is, we really need to see what it, what it costs on an all-in basis to run the village for a year, you know, and really over probably a 10- or 15-year term.
I agree. Any others?
So just to clarify, sorry, John Metz, you didn't, you didn't do anything differently with the leaf pickup? You didn't do anything differently with the uniforms for Public Works? You didn't do anything differently for any of those line items? Is that correct?
The leaf pickup program is not added back, there's been no change to uniforms. Those are matters that were not before, it's in the budget, other than the dollars and cents, that, like, the leaf pickup program is going to be a policy decision. The uniforms is also a benefit to employees that we would need to discuss at the board , and to decide how we want, you know, maybe there's a different way, maybe we cut it all out, and reflect it as something on the wages, you know, there's multiple items, or, I shouldn't say multiple items, multiple ways to maybe handle it. And that's not to say that's an issue that's dead, it's just, it's not going to be reflected in this budget for this year.
Thank you.
Is there something on this side?
And, Mayor, 21 Stone Heart, just a reminder, that when you talk about the leaf program, that you can contact the Illinois Department of Commerce to file for a grant. So if some trustees are pursuing that, you can contact the state.
You know, is there a specific department that you contact within that department?
It just states, I mean, not department, but a specific office or person that contacts within that department. You know, I'll go back and look at this letter, and I'll, I'll let you know if I can find it, whether it's the phone number.
Jacob Wittenberg, 6120, Tim Ridge Court. Just a question going off Mr. Corcoran's question. It does seem like there is a significant amount of capital expense in terms of roads and sewers and things that will have to be addressed. I think the mayor, you know, shed light on the fact that, at some point, we are going to have to offset these expenses and take care of these things that need to be taken care of, the well, the streets, those kinds of things. How do we cut discretionary spending, or offer some kind of, whether it be bonds, or some kind of way to raise revenues? Because, you know, in this current budget situation, it doesn't look like we will, you know, we can do one street at a time, or two streets at a time, but we can't take care of the entire system. So I guess I'm, you know, individually asking all the trustees, have there been talks about what we can do to free up that cash, or to raise that revenue?
I think we have had discussions, and continue to have discussions, on how to come up with cash to not only run the village day to day, and, you know, from year to year. We're aware that there are, you know, capital needs that are out there. Streets have been put off for a while, especially, you know, most recent added time. And last year, when we sought to increase revenue to the village, one of the things that I kept repeating to people was, the longer you delay, the more it's going to cost. But we have to operate, and the first thing is we have to pay the bills. And the budget, I will admit that it's more about trying to get by from one day to the next, one year to the next, than it is to replace all these things. That's not to say I wouldn't like to do it. I, I was looking at some of the audited, from our audited financial statements, and I look back to 2008, and just the financial highlights, and I think this is significant. Like Kurt said, we're not doing enough, and there's a lot of waste, and, you know, we can cut spending, and, you know, a lot of, lot of things from along those lines, but the year ended April 30 of 2008, our general fund, which is our corporate fund, is where most of the money comes in, and most of the money goes out, and this would have been at the end of my first year as mayor, the general fund was negative $589,000. And the next year, we improved on it and got it down to $520,000 in the hole. In 2010, it was down to $362,000 in the hole. 2011, it was only $62,000 in the hole. And ending April 30 of 2012, last year, the general fund was actually $95,000 to the good. So myself and prior board, over the last six years, I... So myself and prior board over the last six years, I think that's a tremendous turnaround. I don't know if you folks in the audience feel good about it or if it makes any difference. But I think it's an accomplishment. We turned it around. But we did a lot of things and we had to forego a lot of things to get the general fund in shape. And having a good general fund, we have cash flow now, I'm told, we actually have cash flow. Now I have to worry, like, it happened to Mayor Pellegrino, where he found out around Christmas that there wasn't going to be enough money in the bank to pay bills. So they set up a short-term loan. Actually, we have cash flow now. I feel good about that. That's an accomplishment. That, to me, does not indicate waste. But it's not without cost. We don't have that other police officer that we need. Employees have three years of no pay raises. We haven't repaid streets. So I thought it was an accomplishment.
Hi. Couple things that you just said, you know, I have to disagree with some of the things that you are saying that we are cut to the bone, when I know you collect health insurance. That's crazy. There is an editor for the smoke signals, who is that?
Kathy Weech.
Okay. I'm going to volunteer to do it. If she can't do it within her own job position, I'll volunteer to do it for free. There's trustee pay issues. Have we identified how the three trustees who ran partly on the idea that they wouldn't collect salary or stipend or whatever you want to call, is that going back into the budget?
Back at the budget because we can't take it out of the budget.
Well, I mean, that $9,000, where is that? That's a benefit, right? Some are else in the budget, we're earning that back because they're not taking it.
A memo was passed out, maybe council, the chair talked about it, yeah.
The Illinois Constitution as well as the Illinois municipal code does not allow elected officials' compensation, whether it be the mayor, whether it be trustees, be changed during their term of office. So any change of compensation would have to only take effect after the next election. The board would have to pass an ordinance changing that compensation. And it would only be effective, as I said, after the next election.
How is the mayor of LaGrange therefore not taking a stipend for the first year?
I'm not familiar with what he's doing. He may be demanding it back. That was a suggestion I made to trustees who wanted, or in my memo to the trustees, they wanted to do that.
I seem to recall, and I will go digging to get this clarified, but I feel like other people's pay was changed while they were in office, including Mayor Andrews. Can you, can we, do I have to do a FOIA to get that kind of information?
I'm not aware of it. Never been brought to my attention, anybody's compensation has been changed during your term of office.
Well, at some point, he didn't, that $4,000 or $6,000 that he gets wasn't part of his picture. It didn't have, I don't believe Mr. Pellegrino was collecting it.
Actually, the healthcare reimbursement that you get is something that is paid to the local liquor commissioner, which by Illinois statute happens to be the village president. There was an ordinance passed in the year 2000, I don't have the number right in front of me, that the village board at that time said the reimbursement for healthcare, it's not health insurance through the village. It's a reimbursement to what the individual, it's not specific to me. It's for the village president, who is the local liquor commissioner, now as also the video gaming commissioner. So...
That's really a ridiculous perk.
Well, you know what?
You know, what's the, how do we, how do we go about changing that? Do I have to do a referendum?
That's going to be something that the board can discuss. And, you know, if they wish to keep it, they can keep it. And if they wish to review it, they can review it.
When? If they're interim, when can that happen?
After the next election. Or he adds up the next election.
November?
What is the, what is the...
Two years. Two years, maybe.
What is the constitution? Is the constitution of post say about the salary and benefit changes in office?
It would take effect as the new trustees and or village president take office.
Well, let's be clear then, we haven't really cut to the bone, since you've never even considered those sorts of options. You're full, you're an employee of your own business.
Someone said we're cut to the bones.
Huh?
Someone said we're cut to the bones.
He said it a million times.
I know, he did.
Oh, I can find it, I can find it in the minutes from previous years. Anyway.
We will have that discussion on another day.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
If you will, trustee Wittenberg has some questions.
Well, I...
And then we'll come back to you, because she had asked earlier if you could call.
You talked a little bit about wish lists, right? You talked about putting a wish list item off. And I think this budget, from my perspective, being one of the new trustees, there are certain policy issues regarding the budget creation process that I want to have on the record, if I may do so. I communicated these issues both to Frank and to Dave, as well as to the mayor. And I want to make sure that we talk about policy wishlist items. These are items that we can't do anything about right now, like what you're bringing up, Mrs. Metz, regarding issues that have to be changed by the board and voted on and come to consensus to agree we're going to make big changes. I think overall, and we've talked about this before in the last meeting, creation and review process for the budget needs to improve. Our communication needs to improve, our review process needs to improve. We have no formalized budget framework. We have no schedules. We have a general schedule that I have given to Frank as an example of a budget planning process from another village that I've offered, that we can use as a framework for a budget planning process. I am formally requesting that we place on a board meeting agenda in the near future that we talk about delineating a new budget creation and review process and understand exactly who will be responsible for this item. I'm also formally requesting on a policy issue that the mayor and the village board create a finance committee to be part of our fiduciary process in the village. I reboot this request with Administrator Alonso and Mayor Andrews. And I'm requesting this to be formally placed on the board agenda for the August meeting and a plan presented to define the finance committee, to find the process for applications, to get interested candidates and residents, to interview, evaluate, and select a finance committee. I'm also formally requesting, as we talked last meeting, of a professional services purchasing audit, which Frank has started, to review the current way we are contracting and using professional services. We discussed legal last time. That's not the only professional service contract that we have. We got a list today from Kathy, or yesterday finally, of all of the contracts. We need to know what arrangements we're making, the monthly summary of our hours and work performed for the village. We do not have a lot of that data on our current professional services contracts, on the FOIA for the legal agreements. There's not detailed hourly reports that are provided to us. We'd like the same on the engineering and other professional services agreements. I'm also formally requesting to the mayor and from the village board to look at an ordinance to alter the dollar amount that can be spent without village board approval. Currently, today, any expense or capital item up to $20,000 does not currently need to be voted on by the village board. I am formally requesting this be placed on the agenda in the near future. Also formally requesting that the mayor and the village board trustees receive a report on options to refinance the current loan that we began principal payments on this year, which was close to $90,000 paid in principal payments on a obligation that if we were provided with refinance alternatives last year, we may not have to have a $90,000 principal payment this year. So those are five or six ideas that I want to make sure for the record that we have placed on agendas. And I can provide these to you if you would like them for upcoming meetings to get to some of these wishlist policy items. Thank you.
I'd appreciate if you could drop off or email us.
Absolutely.
So we planned, I know I talked to Frank and I thought that was conveyed to you. And if it wasn't, then it got lost in the shuffle. But we will have the discussion regarding the finance committee in the August meeting.
No, I just want to know, I want people to know for the record that we are having these discussions. They need to be, they need to be continued, and they need to be put on the agendas. And we need to start working on the policy part of this. So again, next year, we're not all sitting here with the same issues that we're all feeling like that need to be resolved. Thank you.
Trustee Lockman?
Yes. Tom Hinshaw had asked me if I would return things as soon as I was able to be here today. I hope that would, I am very sorry I am not able to attend this meeting to talk about and to vote on the village budget. I take my elected position as trustee of our fine village very seriously. I represent the community, and the community has told me how they feel. I believe setting a budget and passing an appropriation ordinance are either the most important things we do as a board, or it is up there near the top of the list. I am disappointed on how the budget process has unfolded since being elected. As a new trustee, I asked the president and the village manager for a meeting to help the new trustees to help get ramped up on the budget. I asked for a town hall type meeting for the entire community to have more time and opportunity to participate with comments and questions. And I volunteered to be a part of the draft budget creation process. I was told no to my request. And was also told that the normal June, July board meeting schedule would be good enough to get the job done. I scheduled my summer vacation around the regular scheduled meetings. And the new surprise meeting tonight means the whole yearly budget process for the village is being pushed in a 30-day window. We got the first draft budget on 5/27, and tonight is a vote on what may be the most important job we do as a board. With the way the budget process has been managed, with the extremely short window for the board and community to have any input with the deficits in the future budget years, without any sort of plan to accompany the deficits with certain areas that I feel we could have cut more from the village ongoing yearly expenses and with what I see as the loss of potential revenue for the village. If I were there and would be voting in person, I would vote no to the budget as presented. I will see everyone in July, sincerely, trustee Tom Hinshaw.
And then I wanted to add on to it. I was wondering too, as far as the streetlight electricity, were you able to find out whether that was in the aggregation?
The aggregation was just for small business and residential, the streetlights.
And then also too, I did send an email back to Frank in regards to the trustee salary, the $250. And I said that I did not want to go against the village ordinance. I'm not asking you to raise it, I'm not asking you to lower it. I'm just not going to accept money. And it's, I'm not going to be filling out any W-4 form because I'm not going to be accepting it. So I'm not asking you to raise it, lower it, or anything like that, I'm just not accepting it.
And I think, you know, we're pretty much all on that. I can speak for myself personally, as far as not providing the W-4 information as well.
I'm not sure what the ramifications of that is, but it's my understanding that the law requires us to make that payment and also to make any deductions required by law, such as social security and FICA, plus make the matching employer contribution. So the $250 stipend has actually cost the village a little bit more than the $250. But Frank had advised me that he had not received any of the W-4s. And I, you know, this is obviously some new ground. I don't know the answer, and we'll have to figure out how to handle it. But I understand your wishes, and nobody's trying to negate that.
We've gotten feedback from council that that was something that was legitimately able to happen. So if there's something we need to follow up on, who's left also?
Okay, any more from the trustees? There are none, and the chair would end it.
I guess the question may be out of turn, but...
Ms. Coleman?
Carol Coleman. In Mr. Hinshaw's letter that trustee Alonso read, he talked about revenues. And I guess that was one of the questions that I have is, does he have, are there revenue ideas from the trustees? Because that, he can't, if he hasn't got the money, he can't spend it. So are there revenue suggestions that could be shared with the audience? I know in order to do any project, any infrastructure project, any help, you have to be billed and pay it back. And in order to have it paid back, you have to have revenue, additional revenue. So were there revenue ideas? I'm sorry that I missed the last meeting where the budget was discussed, obviously in more detail. So I guess, did Mr. Hinshaw submit some revenue ideas?
Well, actually, I think of two things that may fall into the category you're talking of that trustee Hinshaw had suggested. First of all is, he believes that a fairly high percentage of the village residents do not buy vehicle stickers. I think in the neighborhood, he suggested about 40%. And that if the village were to crack down hard enough, that we would be able to realize the additional revenue from the SCOTF laws. So that, to the extent that's true, and we are aware that there are people who avoid buying the stickers. And to the extent we can catch a ticket him on the street, or, you know, it's been standing that the police try to do that, there's limits as to what they can do. But if that were the case, and that it is 40%, that would be significant, that could be revenue. I don't think it's that high personally, but I don't have, I have not sit down to actually match. I don't know if there's any way you can tell precisely that there are this many cars right now and that we have records that show that all of them have vehicle stickers, or he doesn't, for a number of reasons. And then the other one that might be a revenue answer was in connection with his request to restore the leaf pickup program, that the expenditure will be about $30,000. And that he believes that there would be about 200, you know, we could do it like on a subscription basis. And I don't know if that's something that's possible, sell services to just certain individuals. But assuming, you know, his analysis was along the lines that we restore it, costs $30,000, and it's his estimate, and that we would have 200 people sign up, and that we should charge him $40 per year, which would net an $8,000 increase in revenue. So that is a revenue, that's a revenue raising idea, but it goes with a $22,000 deficit on the expense side. I, you know, trustees, you all got that information. Is there any other revenue? Short of those two, I'm not aware of any of the trustees suggesting a way to enhance revenues to the village.
I'm just curious, because they have a lot of expense cutting that is proposed, and I get that, having been or done that. But it's still, are they going to do any additional programs that are...
There are, as you heard, there are policy manner things that would ultimately, I don't, I don't know if you would call that a net, an increase in revenue, certainly would be a cutback in expenses. The liquor commissioner, healthcare reimbursement, the trustee stipends, uniforms for the employees, things like that. Cut the expense, so you have much, but it isn't enhancing the revenue above and beyond what we've already predicted here. Perhaps, and that's a good question, one thing that I have been thinking about for a while, and we wrote out the recession with for the last few years. But in 2008, the village undertook a review of all fees, business license fees and so forth within the village, because it had not been done since 2003. So we did it across the board in 2008. In fact, with help of council, we have nicely compacted all the fees into one section of the municipal. And it's now 2013, I think it's time that we revisit those items. And there probably are things out there that we can look to, to increase revenue. You know, I read all the stuff, and I don't have that instant total recall of every, you know, every item. But I just thought of another one that trustee Hinshaw talked about was with respect to water and sewer being self-sufficient. And that if it's not, then perhaps we could raise the water rates to the residents to get the money to cover that part of it. So that is a suggestion perhaps for increased revenue. So that is a suggestion perhaps for increased revenue, raising the water rates above and beyond.
But that really, increasing the water rates only, you're only, quote, taxing a certain part of the village.
Correct.
You're not, you have the whole, like a lot of people in the village who gather water from the Highlands and not from.
Absolutely, that is correct. And that would be for the water and sewer companies and that would help on that infrastructure. And I will say it's a policy, but I, I think fairness dictates that if you're raising revenue from the village, from water and sewer, that's coming from 80% of the village, to use it for general activities that benefit 100% of the village, isn't quite fair to be 80% to have to pay that. But that's, you know, perhaps somebody will say something, it'll trigger something else that may have come up, but there's, you know, short of what we've said, there's not been a concrete, well, if we do this, we're going to get this much money. We do have video gaming coming in now since December of last year. We have it projected in the budget, I don't know if it's anticipated, well, we're getting at it, but, you know, if we have the other entity that was here and applied and received a liquor license, gets theirs, then, you know, who might get some more video gaming revenue in town. But again, it's, I don't know that that's enough to pay your street lip, so to speak.
Just to, Jake Wittenberg again, just to clarify though, I think, I'm not totally familiar with trustee Hinshaw's ideas and I wasn't at the last meeting either, but I, I think, just to clarify for myself, the way I understood it is that his, his idea to raise water rates would only cover the offsetting of the cost for the water sewer system. Is that correct? So it wouldn't actually be contributing to roads or a general fund, it would just offset the cost of giving water and sewer services to those people?
Yeah, that's what, that if it was not self-sufficient, he suggested we raise the water rates.
Right.
But, but beyond that, to raise revenue from water rates, if, if somebody were to suggest to use that to help the village in general, that's where it's.
But, but the way he suggested it was more fair than, than just raising revenue for, you know, for general use. I mean, I think it, just, just as a fairness principle, it would be fair to raise the rates on the people that are using the system.